Stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is September thirteenth, September third, two thousand thirteen. Time is seven P. M. Regular meeting agreed for common council's called order. This time question walk cell phones pages any other iconic devices to be silenced place. Call over.
One. Eric.
Eric.
Daryl.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Got the minutes from the August fifth meeting? Are there any corrections or additions to amendments of any kind? As you see. If not, I would take a motion to approve this as you proceed though. On that look.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion passed. Thank you. Now we'd like to close. There is no old business. I'd like to close this meeting and open it for the public hearing on ordinance two thousand thirteen dash eleven fourteen city budget for the first reading. And so it's open to the public. Any questions, comments on our city budget for two thousand fourteen? Jamie, please come forward.
Okay. I just want to ask a couple of basic questions. You got a public hearing.
Jean, I'm sorry. Could you please state your full name and address?
Jane Johannigman in one thirty-six West Central, Greensburg, Indiana.
Thank you.
And you're having a public hearing tonight though. It'll be one public hearing on this. Is that correct?
Uh, city budget. Yeah, city budget only requires one.
Okay. And two readings?
Yes.
Okay. That's, uh, will there be a copy of that available for the public or not?
Sure. Requested.
Okay. I'd like to request one, please. Thank you.
You can do it right. Exactly what you need to the president's office.
Okay. Thank you.
She bet. Any other questions or comments regarding the two thousand fourteen closed budget? We have had the first reading on salaries, correct?
Yes, there has been a first reading on salaries.
General budget does require public hearing. If there's not anything else, I mean speak now. Forever hold your peace, please. But you're more than welcome to speak. And Mark, I know you've got something on your mind.
Always.
If I don't hear anything, there's no need to keep it open. Any markers or judgment? And I'm going to take a motion to adjourn the public meeting. Public hearing closed. Now we'll reopen the regular meeting for tonight. First item on agenda, tax payments. We have Hitachi Powder Metals here. Greg Owens, September place.
Good evening, everyone.
Greg.
My name is Greg Owens. I'm the vice president at Hitachi Powder Metals USA. And I'm here tonight seeking a ten-year tax payment for both the new building construction and personal property investment. The building is approximately nine thousand square foot building and the estimated cost is one billion, one point two eight billion dollars as well as four point five five million dollar equipment, uh, equipment that will be installed in this new building. To give you a little bit of background, uh, understanding that our name is Hitachi Powder Metals, this is actually a new type of product for us. We were purchased by Hitachi Chemical about five years ago and Hitachi Chemical owns other types of manufacturing processes and products they manufacture. And so this is actually a new product for us because it's not going to be made out of, or produced out of powder metal. It's going to be a plastic high resin, uh, plastic gear that will be used also in automotive industry. So it's actually going to be, um, transferred from Japan to the United States for a customer in the United States. And, um, it's a, it's a new type of process for us. So we're going to take it slowly when it comes to launching, um, this new product at our location. So it's actually a four-step process. What we're asking for in the payment for tonight is just the first stage, which is the amount of investment I just mentioned. It's going to include hiring seven additional employees or two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in additional annual payroll, which will bring us up to seven point five million, annually in payroll. Now, there's actually three additional phases that we have planned to take place. This first phase that we're talking about tonight is expected to be completed in two thousand fifteen, April two thousand fifteen. And then if that goes well as planned, then we actually have a second phase that will is expected to be completed in two thousand sixteen, a third phase in two thousand seventeen, and a fourth phase in two thousand eighteen. So even though it's going to be some of the Hitachi Powder Metals company name, it's due process, new type of product for us. And again, it's going to be made out of a high resin, high strength, plastic material that will actually start off by being having a blank made in Japan as part of the first phase. We're actually only going to be producing, taking the blank and machine maybe a product to a finished specification. And then actually the second phase will increase our capacity to handle more blanks. And then the third phase is when we'll start making a march from raw materials all the way through to the finished product. This is for only one customer. However, we believe that this product will become very successful and popular for us. We already have additional customers interested in this product. So we believe that this may be a good opportunity for us to grow even more so than just in the powder metal industry.
Any questions?
Counsel and Terry Blake can chime anytime you'd like to, but the reasoning that the committee looked at ten years, which is kind of standard, if you will, on new buildings is history show. But on the equipment, we chose ten years because the type of equipment that it is that can be changed over for different models for design. And some of this equipment just needs to be maintained. That's well worth twenty-year life of the equipment. So that's why the council had chosen to recommend ten years in this particular payment called the life limit. And I say the property is very well given, new building. And it's not just seven employees, it's seven, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight.
Yes.
Sixty-eight employees addition. And hopefully that will grow into more as well.
Now, these are also all full-time positions. These will be temporary positions.
And he mentioned temporary positions. As far as temporary positions, would you like to explain that to the rest of council, Greg?
Um, well, we have what we call full-time positions, which the employees receive benefits as well as their wage or salary. And then we also use local temporary service or temporary agencies that we hire workers that work forty hours or more a week, but they are paid through the temporary agency and do not receive any benefits as part of their package. For these positions, all of these are, will be planned is that they will be full-time positions that they will receive. And on average, a thirty-eight thousand dollars per year is the average annual expected salary. And they also receive full benefits as part of the package.
And I'm getting back to the temporarys though. As far as having temporarys, if they're hired full-time, they receive full benefits at that time and their hiring date goes back to the original hire.
Yes. Actually, we have different types of temporary positions. What you're talking about is the, we call the contingent temporary positions. So when they're hired, they are hired at the same wage as a full-time person. They receive uniforms, same training, but they're not considered full-time yet. Then they are used for a trial period. After that, they're qualified to fill an open position once one becomes available. However, once they are hired, their seniority date, that goes back to the date that they were hired as contingent employee.
It's a fair system to, you know, hear and hear. And any questions from council on this basis? I'd say just from the committee's standpoint, I think this is a good thing for both Hitachi and for the cities. Terry, agree?
Yes, I do. I agree with that.
Jamie?
I'll make a motion that we, I guess it's not a written resolution, but it's resolution two thousand thirteen dash nine.
Yes, for both real estate and personal property.
And it's for ten years on both. I'll make the motion that we pass resolution two thousand thirteen dash nine for ten years on both.
Second.
Any further discussion? Harry, none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Williams, important part of the next procedure, not for you, going back to the, uh, the original city budget, you didn't actually pass that on the first reading. You had the public hearing. Did you want to actually pass that on the first reading tonight?
Should, should.
So you're going to be in motion to pass?
We got second reading, October tenth.
No. We'll pass the salaries. I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance two thousand eleven, or two thousand thirteen dash eleven, uh, the two thousand fourteen city budget on the first reading.
Second. Further discussion? I'll do a roll call on this one, Bridget.
Daryl.
Yes.
Terry.
Yeah.
Blake.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Passed the first reading. Thank you, council. And then we can also have GCOM with resolution two thousand thirteen dash ten. That is equipment that is, uh, that they are bringing here from Kentucky land and that's been closed. And part of the equipment they're bringing up is being distributed to the Greensburg High School for training in the future. And things they have left, they utilize in the manufacturing, uh, they're writing the regional plan, they're going to utilize it. It is used equipment. We're not sure the expectancy of the equipment. So the committee has suggested three years on that different equipment. Thanks. And I said, you know, counsel, we are, committee is keeping a close eye on what the agreements have been as far as the abatements in the amount of jobs that have been promised. So we felt like the three years was, we used equipment and not having used the knowledge of the position. GCOM doesn't like to suggest three years.
You mentioned that, keeping a close eye on the, their keeping to their commitment. Is there some kind of a follow-up that we do for that, a scheduled follow-up?
We have the form on the CF ones, which are the renewals. And then we ask the questions, uh, who are, or at, you know, we've probably seen them before.
Right.
Or the taxes currently paid, this, that, and the other, because we've had experience in the past where people had not paid their taxes, had hired someone to do it, and had paid their taxes for two or three years. And then when it was resolved, issue was resolved by the, what do you call it?
People.
People. That then they still got their abatements. So now we don't do that. We work with the county to make sure the taxes are paid on time. And if they're not, they don't receive the abatements. They have system set now where it's red flag, the taxes are not paid, and they are not getting their abatements even when their taxes are paid.
And to be clear, no reflection on GCOM? That was the name of the general question.
Right.
Were you also asking that as far as how to track where they are as far as their expectations?
Right.
How many jobs that they've created? Or if they, at this point?
When they're CF one, that's it.
Where they're CF one, but at the same time, we can see on their renewal that if they haven't met those expectations, but it's all or nothing.
And, and they've always, for we know, if the, if the employment has dropped, they will stay at the, and it has dropped, the county gives the proper number. And it's not, they was trying to draw anybody or hide anything. They've been business and our schools. And when the economy declined so, since a large mountain came away, we didn't analyze anyone. It's kind of caked as a woman down. We helped as much as we could, so we did not, uh, we, we command the abatements to go on as usual.
Oh, absolutely.
That touches on some of the businesses. So, but that's where we're at, and there needs to be a new system. The IDC and the Anna Economic Development Corporation, they give the, their benefits based on performance. And that's probably the way abatements should be done. Right now, the way the law states, we can only give abatement or not give one that year. And what Blake and Terry and I have discussed is if, if a company is down twenty percent from what they had promised, reduce the abatement twenty percent, adjust. We can't do that this time. Do they get it or they don't? Sometimes neither one is fair to the city or the business. So we might do something like that in future, but there has to be language written and easy to legislative branch at any level to get something that will all change. I think that'd be more fair for, I'm sure some people, uh, some councils probably do not permit the abatements for certain years. And that's not always fair either, and it's not caused by the business or the industry. Decisions are made by decision makers. Sometimes other situations that causes this type of downplaying in the economy. So you try to keep or take everything into consideration. That's, that's the way it works on the S B ones, which is original, and the CF ones are renewals every year.
Any, any more questions, council?
I'll make the motion that we pass resolution two thousand thirteen dash ten.
Next. Further discussion? Harry, you're in. Please, Bridget.
Was that Blake? Did you second that, Blake, or was it Terry? Okay. Sorry. Now we'll get it going here. Okay. Uh, Blake?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yeah.
Daryl?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, Unbar, Mr. John Gillian, according to reverse financial analysis.
Thank you, Mary. Pleasure to be in front of the council again. It's been a little while. I've got a report, maybe you've got copies up that have done, that would be on there here. And Daryl, I'm not sure if you brought that one. You're limited one.
Does that one have pictures?
Yeah. We're not having them in public.
Oh, okay.
Since it's been a while before I've been in front of the council discussing rates, let me just take a second to kind of give you an overview of how we approach these sort of studies. Um, our objective is to come back with a financial plan and recommendation to the council that moves the utility forward financially. And to get to the point where we feel comfortable making a recommendation, what we do is we take a look at the historical operations of the utility and evaluate and analyze that historical data. And then we take a, um, look at the utility's current balance sheet, cash position, and evaluate the strength of, uh, of the, the balance sheet. And with that, that analysis, it gives us a pretty good starting point, uh, to start focusing on what is most important, and that is what direction the utility going in the future. Um, and analyze that data to ultimately reach a recommendation regarding, uh, the accuracy of the current rates and charges and any adjustments. And the report that I just passed out summarizes that analysis. And, uh, in good accounting fashion, we've stretched that analysis out to twenty-six pages. And, um, if you'd like, I could go through all twenty-six pages. Or if you're like, most of the people that I speak with, you prefer that I hit the, the highlights and let the, uh, questions kind of direct us if we want to drill down into any of the other schedules that we've included that are more supportive in nature in terms of the analysis. Um, and if it's okay with you, I'll start with that approach. And as I said, if we need to drill down to look at any, any of the other schedules, we'll take as much time as, as we need to do that. But ultimately, as I lead you through that, we're going to reach a schedule that kind of summarizes the analysis and it presents to you the, uh, the recommended, uh, approach that we think is appropriate for the, for the sewage works. But to begin with, um, what we want to look at is the, uh, the, identify the financial needs that the sewage works needs to, to fund. And if you flip back to page five, you start with, um, the, one that, uh, represents the most significant, uh, financial requirements for sewage works. And that's the funds needed to take care of the day-to-day operations of running the, the business of, of collecting and treating sewage. And on page five, what we do is we start with the actual expenses, day-to-day operating expenses of the sewage works, um, which amounted to about a million five hundred and seventy-five thousand in two thousand and twelve. And, um, there are a number of expense accounts that make up that million five hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we've analyzed those accounts to determine, um, based upon the best information available, how we can anticipate those expenses changing going forward. And by changing, I do mean increases and decreases. And, um, from that analysis, we've identified an expected change of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the day-to-day operating costs. And, um, you can see on this schedule, there's some reference numbers that refer back to the next couple of pages that give you an explanation. So feel free to look at those and ask any questions on those. But we believe that just for analysis of those accounts, that the, the working number for day-to-day operating costs is, should be about one point seven million. Now, in addition to the specific, uh, changes that we expect in that account, we know that the sewage works is a business, and like any business, it's subject to increases that result from inflation. And to be reasonable, what we want to do is make sure that we account for that. And, um, so in addition to the hundred and seventy-five, excuse me, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of specific increases, we feel it's prudent to, to, to anticipate about another fifty-one thousand dollars of increases that relate to inflation. So the first category of cost that we want to make sure that our financial plan addresses is about a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the day-to-day operating expenses of sewage works. Day-to-day operating costs of the sewage works are, is, is the largest category, but there's other things that we need to make sure that the rates and charges are adequate to fund. And if you flip back to page nine, is, we'll talk in for a second about the next category of expenses that, um, need to be part of the financial plan. And that's the dollars needed to invest in equipment, to keep that equipment functioning and operating. Because over time, pieces, key pieces of equipment where we're out, where we're out and need to be replaced, where there needs to be some extensions to the system. And, um, let me take a second here and commend the, the utilities, because for a number of years, they've, they've been using a practice of a rolling financial plan, multi-year, five-year capital improvement plan, which is an excellent management tool, uh, and not all utilities do that. Um, but you can see what that plan looks like on page nine. And it identifies over the next, uh, five years as a estimate of improvements of about one point nine million dollars. And, um, uh, those, um, expenses obviously are going to come in over the next five years. So we don't need one point nine million dollars right now, but on average, we're going to need about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, from the rates and charges to make sure that we can make those investments. And so the second piece of the financial plan is to make sure that we have that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars addressed in the rates and charges. Uh, before I leave this schedule, the other thing that is, I think, worth noting and a, um, a good practice is that the, uh, utilities are also identifying those major items that go beyond what you can be funded from day-to-day operating, or day-to-day revenues, uh, those big ticket items that are out there. Now, those items probably aren't going to happen this year, maybe not next year, but it's good to have them out there because they're on the radar screen. Um, when that information's a little better developed in terms of time that, um, they'll need to move, utilities can need to move forward with those improvements and what those actual dollar amounts are, they could be rolled into the financial plan. But there's about, um, two and a half million dollars that are out there that, um, that at some point will come to the, uh, become a little more pressing and need to be moved forward with. But right now, the financial plan is addressing that one point nine million so that we have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on average, um, in our annual, in our, uh, annual rates and charges. So we've talked about day-to-day operating costs, we've talked about the annual need to reinvest in, in, in capital. There is a third component that needs to be built into the financial plan, and those are the funds needed to retire the, uh, the long-term debt that the sewage works has outstanding. So if you flip to page ten, you can see the repayment schedule for the three bond issues that have been issued by the sewage works, um, and what that means in terms of annual dollars that need to be built into the, into the financial plan. And there are three util, uh, three bond issues. One from two thousand, uh, that pays off in about eight years, seven or eight years, uh, in two thousand and twenty. And then there were some, two series of bonds issued in two thousand and seven, and those relate to, um, the improvements that were driven in, in large part by the Honda project. And in large part, those dollar, those, those bonds are being paid for from TIF revenues that are being generated from the Honda, uh, project. But, uh, when you analyze, uh, what the annual requirements are, how much is being paid for by TIF, what's left needs to be funded from the annual, uh, monthly sewer bills. And it averages out to be about a million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, per year. And that is the third piece of the, um, of the financial plan that needs to be, uh, that needs to be funded. Um, so what we want to do then is compare what those financial needs are to what the financial, uh, capacity the sewage works has, given the current rates and charges. So we flip back to page thirteen, and it brings that analysis together. And this is the basis of our recommendation. And so, um, what you'll first notice is we've got two columns here. And, um, one of the components of our recommended financial plan is to approach an adjustment in rates and charges in two steps. One that would be effective this year and one that would be effective in two thousand and fourteen. And, um, each year, um, what we know is we need to have enough money to take care of the day-to-day operating costs, um, pay off the outstanding bonds, and have money built in for our, our multi-year capital improvement plan. And in two thousand and thirteen, we've identified those needs to be about three million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And we look at your current financial capacity, given your current rates and charges, and we find that we could plan on revenue coming in the door, about three million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So we've got a gap between the money going out and the money coming in of around a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And to address that gap, our recommendation is to adjust your rates and charges. And to address that gap, our recommendation is to adjust your rates and charges 4% across the board. What that means is your average residential monthly bill would go from $30.24 to around $31.45, or about a $1.20 increase. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we've approached this in a two-step phase, so that in 2014, we've identified those annual needs, those dollars going out the door, at $3,355,000. And after the adjustment in 2013, we would have about a $100,000 gap, which again would require an adjustment of about 3%, which would have the impact of a dollar increase to the average residential customer. Now, based on the analysis that we're doing, we're trying to put forward a recommendation that will keep you moving in the right direction financially with utilities over the next four to five years. So we're not anticipating any adjustments beyond 2014. But I would say that, you know, the further you look out, the more cloudy the crystal ball becomes. And if things were to change in terms of additional costs beyond what we're planning here, changes in your customers' usage pattern, et cetera, you might have to revisit that. But you've done a good job of kind of monitoring this as it goes forward, and I think you've done a good job in terms of trying to approach how you manage your rates and charges to keep those increases in the more modest levels, like 3%, 4%, 5%, and do it kind of on a semi regular basis, you know, every year or so, and kind of let those take care of itself in the next couple of years. So I think you're setting yourself up here to follow in that pattern, if, if you're comfortable with our recommendation of implementing an adjustment of rates that would be, as I said, by 4% across the board this year, 3% next year. That should eliminate those gaps, put you in the right position to address your financial needs and keep the utility moving forward financially. So you can see, I've taken those 26 pages and kind of boiled it down to six or seven pages. I'm not doing that to try to, to cut out any of the information. If you've got questions, either on the schedules that I've specifically talked about, or questions about things that are on the other schedules, or questions about anything else that I haven't really adequately addressed, be happy to try to answer those.
Daryl, I've been through it once, but Terry, Blake, and Jamie, just, let's see. Jamie, you can remember, and Daryl can as well, in the past, last administration, we encouraged this 15% once, we chose to go 5.5, probably the plus. And we did that, current administration, prior administration to that, back in '05 or '06.
This administration did the third year.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, the third year of this administration. So by not doing the 15% that we were encouraged in, first time back in '06, it's like 16% of our member rights, and they chose to go 5.55. And the last administration done that as well, we also did. And Mary, you bet you're already behind 10% instead of the first year. But, you know, trying to be frugal as they've been, and spending more than half to, we're kind of catching up, where the increase is not that large now. And for other reasons, you know, it's because we weren't selling as much at that time, are you? So revenue was great, so it's going to be 15% off the top, it's 4.3, and, you know, increase is planned for the third, fourth, and fifth year. And with what you guys just did, trying to help business out, create more jobs, and use it more water than wastewater, taught you to have another 100 employees, and basically you're looking at 107 in the next couple, three years, and value of 200 for the next couple of years.
Delton?
Delton, another 160. That should help our revenue, we'll be Greensburg, help out water wastewater use as well, so we'll have more revenue from water uses, and raising for next, 16 years. So that's kind of where we're at in the council of water, is about the same spiel, different amount. Water is 35 cents to the average household, 533 cubic feet, 35 cents the first year, and 20 cents the second year. No raises, trying to keep it down, which we could, where we may have a raise, 55 cents the first year on the water. So that's kind of what we came up with to justify the increases and making as painless as possible. The water, second thing. The water board has not passed theirs yet, there was three members in attendance, and they wanted everyone to be there to discuss it, so I look like to be discussed and passed next month. Now, if they're back here, I'll have to talk to them. Probably order some of that time. Any questions, Council?
I'll just add that this presentation is given to Board of Works, and obviously you never want to entertain an increase, but I believe in this case, as the other board members did on Board of Works, this is justified, and the Board of Works did recommend to Council that this would pass. Recommend, recommended unanimously.
So we're sort of in there. We're in our direction. Any questions for Mr. Julian?
I'm talking about average, that would be.
I mean, in comparison, your rates are not going out of around range, by average.
And generally, the cost of building business, cost of living is going up 3% every year.
Yeah, I mean, your business, you're subject to the same sort of inflation as any other business, so, you know, 3% is a good planning.
Any more questions then? Thanks, John, appreciate it.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Have a safe trip back home.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Mark Copley, Business Appreciation Day proclamation, he represents the EDC.
Good evening, folks. I hope that in your packets, you have an example of the joint proclamation with the city and county that we hope you would approve tonight, your meeting. This is our third Annual Business Appreciation Day. We do this in a cooperative spirit with the city and the county, and the entities that affect, to some degree, economic development in Greensburg and Decatur County, that being the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Greensburg, and tourism. So in cooperation with those entities and the city and the county, which greatly affect and assist our existing businesses, we would hope that you would proclaim this the two, two and a half weeks now, Friday, September 20th, as Greensburg and Decatur County Business Appreciation Day, the third annual.
And very good from my own, but all businesses in Greensburg, Decatur County, we're all one, are invited to this at no cost.
That is correct, because the generosity, some of the sponsors that we have, including Umba, that was just here. So I don't think Mr. Julian was here till we thank him for that.
I think we only have two, three business people in this room. Mr. Hankman being one of them. You're welcome to come play go. Leave your camera at home. Somebody be at hand. But, you know, but we welcome everybody to come that has a business here, affiliate businesses, you know, it's, it's EDC's time to show appreciation for them being here. And the Lord Mary. So I, any questions?
Very successful in the past.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and you'll be receiving your invitations, I would say by the end of the week. You all have them, because we know, we're great supporters of the existing business that all you folks are here, and we do have an existing business person on the council, or working with the council.
So if there's no questions, I'm going to adjourn the motion to, to like this joint proclamation with the county and city as September the 20th, isn't it?
20th.
20th, the Business Appreciation Day, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, aye. And motion passes.
Thank you. I think it's, it's.
Thank you, sir. Also, also on the utility studies, that included, that involved a lot of time, and Donna was involved in it with the Director of the Administration Office for Utilities, and also Jeff Smith, wastewater, and Rick Denny, water department, to make sure that we try not to miss anything, and we try not to overestimate anything as well. It was a lot of time there, and we couldn't do without them. Is there anything from the council, any questions, any comments?
You want Board of Works, your report?
Yes.
Were you trying to give me, I have you writing down here right here.
You go right ahead, sir.
Quick meeting tonight.
We just have to clarify this. Go ahead.
Tree County Claire is going to be using the gym on November 21st, 26th, 23rd. John Julian spoke to us, the second speech was a lot better than the first. And Brian Robbins introduced us to the new Main Street Director, her name is Sarah Robinson. She is relocating here from, she went to Ball State, she's going to be living downtown, and the office is going to be here in City Hall, and we agreed for, on a six-month lease, which the city attorney will be drawing up. And then Scott Chastain approached the council about an opportunity to receive and anticipates receiving a grant for a Covada UTV, and the only expense to the city other than the F P will be for the insurance. And the mayor estimated that to be $30 to $40 a year, you know, to be unanimously.
Month?
A month. Okay, yes. Thank you for the correction.
I want to clarify that.
Definitely.
You said the year and the month, that's a month.
I wrote year down.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's talk about the rent. You are correct, I said about $30, $40 a year. For the insurance, about $30, $40 a month rent for lease.
I don't think you were listening to me.
Just go ahead and do your thing.
I'm finished, thank you.
I quit, you know.
He obviously heard it torpedium me.
Anything from the audience? I told you first meeting, you're going to be in the corner to keep it up.
And you were watching, I had nothing to do with that. He's heckling from the back room. He's heckling from the back room.
He's on TV.
He's had a little bit to say.
I don't know what happened.
Boy, after that, thank the audience. If the guy would entertain a motion to adjourn, you can adjourn.